All right, welcome everybody to this snowy April. And call this meeting to order. Bailey, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Eigner.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here. It's not on the agenda, but I'll ask everybody to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Dan, do we need to approve the agenda?
No.
Okay, we'll just go forward. Do you want to go through the description or?
Sure, Mayor members of the council, just a quick overview of the process for tonight. We have set up here the schedule of the, of how the 13 candidates for the vacancy will be interviewed. The schedule is on the agenda, which is on the agenda table. Basically, all candidates tonight will be asked the same three questions of the council, and after that they'll have an opportunity to ask the council a question. During the process, we ask that the candidate, when it's their time to interview, go up to the podium and speak into the mic at the podium so it can be picked up by, in-room and as it gets broadcast out live. After the final candidate is interviewed, there'll be a five-minute recess. After that five-minute recess, council reconvene. If there's any deliberation, at that point, council will go into deliberation on the candidates, and then the motions and the vote to appoint a candidate will be done at that time as well. With that, after that's done, the oath of office is optional tonight for whoever is appointed. If they do not take the oath of office tonight, they will take the oath of office prior to the April 9th meeting, so they will be seated during the April 9th meeting. And then with that, the meeting will adjourn. So if there's any question in the process, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's the overview of the process for tonight's meeting.
The only question I have is, will you be asking the questions, or so it's uniform, or?
I can.
Okay.
I can ask a question.
All right, and I would ask any of the council members, if they want to ask a question of a candidate, feel free to go ahead, but keep this upbeat if we can anyway. So as far as calling people in random order, how do we?
You should have that listed in front of on your agenda. We drew those names randomly, so that is the order on 13 there.
Okay.
So that already is a random order that was determined based on, it was a random draw that we did to determine that order.
All right, sounds good, so we have a nice listed random order here. So let's start off with Peter Butte.
Yep.
All right, can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Peter Butte. I've lived in Forest Lake since 2009, when I bought my house in the northwest part of the city with my wife, Megan. Now we have two young children, a six-year-old and a two-year-old. I work as a patrol sergeant in a suburban police agency nearby, and Megan is a real estate agent who owns and operates her own interior design and home staging business. The primary reason I'm interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council is because I want to bring a perspective, a fresh perspective, to analyzing some of our community's real complex issues, and I also want to protect the diversity of interests held by the community members as we discuss them. I believe that a balance of my professional experience and my personal values ensure that I'll be effective in my attempts. First, I have the unique ability to critically examine complex issues and to find value-added solutions. Like I said, I'm a police officer by day, I'm also completing my law degree part-time, so if you can imagine, the majority of my professional time is really committed to problem-solving. I'm always framing issues, defining interests, and trying to develop and implement meaningful long-term solutions to problems. Second, while I'm confident I can articulate my positions well, I'm more proud and I value more my ability to understand and appreciate an opponent's point of view. I think it's extremely important that you're able to value an opponent's perspective because it helps you get past their position and helps you to start understanding their interests. And when we can start to pursue solutions to real difficult problems that are more interest-based rather than, rather than position-based, I think that's where you're going to find that solutions are more impactful, more lasting, and more amicable to both sides of any dispute. And then finally, as a police officer, I have the unique experience of what I'll say is, you know, interacting with people kind of on their turf. No matter which, no matter which community you work in, police officers are called into people's homes or their businesses, or they're interacting with people on the street, and you're always involved in conversations and interactions that kind of challenge the way you look at the world. I'm always amazed at the diversity of people, where they place their priorities, or their values, or their perception of their access to resources, and I think there's a temptation there to, in all good intent, to try and make decisions that align with our personal paradigm or with our perception of reality, but I'd like to see the council focus more on a purpose of providing opportunity for all of our residents to pursue what they define to be success, you know, within reason. And I think the basic ability to do that is really our responsibility to provide an access to some quality essential services, to provide transparent information, and then to really encourage community engagement so that we're ensuring the council and our other elected positions are reflective of the community's values. So if I'm appointed to the council, I intend to bring my pragmatic and transparent approach to problem-solving with a commitment to supporting the interests of all of our residents.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
I believe the top issue for the city in 2018 is the development and maintenance of working relationships with the community's stakeholders. This is a top issue for me for two important reasons. First, forming strong relationships with stakeholders is essential to protecting our long-term interests. When you think about a healthy, ongoing relationship, words that come to mind are trust, honesty, transparency, candor, influence, all these things that are important to having a healthy relationship. When we apply that to our politics, whether we're working with MINDOT to, or the county to design our infrastructure, or if we're working with residents and small businesses to understand their unique needs, or even the schools to ensure we're providing opportunities for our young people and programs that are going to attract people to live and thrive in Forest Lake, these stakeholder relationships really provide that critical point of access for us to be able to become involved in the conversations so that we're being able to effectively advocate for our community's long-term strategic goals. And then second, maintaining and more importantly even cultivating those relationships is a, will provide value, valuable insight for our future opportunities. Like I mentioned, the sooner the council is aware of opportunities, the sooner we can engage our partners and start to pursue some of these mutual objectives. Some of our current issues, like the airport lease negotiations or the zoning amendment regarding the licensed residential facilities, or even this discussion of city administrator, the city administrator recruitment process, are perfect examples of where it would be, it would be helpful to have a deep pool of relationship-based resources to go to for information. Outside opinions can help us understand the issues, shape our priorities, and even help us identify areas of concern that we might overlook if we were to try and handle all of these issues independently in-house at an administrative level. So while Forest Lake is confronting many issues in 2018, prioritizing relationships helps reinforce the idea that we don't have to go at it alone. If I'm appointed to the council, I intend to work diligently to build and maintain a positive working relationship with all of our community stakeholders because I want to fully, I want to fully understand all of the issues before the council, I want to understand the respective impact on the stakeholders, and also the correlating impact on the larger community.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
So I think to best describe my vision for Forest Lake, it's helpful to kind of imagine having an aerial view of the city. First, I imagine and I see a thriving downtown filled with unique shops and retail with a mix of service-based industry. I'd like to see bicycle and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure continue to advance in the area. I think that gets back to where it's superbly important to have these productive relationships with our partners so that Forest Lake remains, you know, kind of a destination and not just a drive-through community. I'd also like to see us capitalize on opportunities to make that downtown area a more seasonal, more all-season destination. I think there's opportunities there to make Lakeside Memorial Park accessible in the winter, to provide, bring people in off the lake, provide ambiance, warmth, and things like that. And then second, I see, I see more strategic retail and commercial development out towards the freeway and on the edges of the city. I think additional retail with chain restaurants and larger-scale commercial improvements are necessary that, when they meet the needs for our working families. I think however, it's important that we carefully vet those commercial proposals to prevent undue competition with other small businesses. And commercial development should also be bringing jobs and those resources that are actually needed by the families in the community. The council's priority should be to protect the small businesses by ensuring that residents and visitors know how to access downtown and to promote the benefits of shopping at our small shops and using our local services. Finally, I see a thriving residential development program encouraging the renovation of existing properties to create affordable and desirable neighborhoods. This is especially important in the downtown transitional neighborhoods because I believe that the, a thriving neighborhood adjacent to the downtown will support the downtown and the downtown will also support the neighborhood, kind of a vice-versa situation. And I'd also like to see the city encourage this DIY movement and making it easier for residents to do safe and cost-effective improvements on their properties. And I'd also like to encourage residents to take pride and invest in their neighborhoods through active participation in community groups and through community planning.
Do you have any questions for the city council?
I know you have a full plate tonight, so I'm not going to keep you with questions. I've added a great opportunity to, to think about the, the opportunity in front of me and the responsibilities and the dedication that it takes. All I ask is for your full consideration, support, and I think, I thank you for the opportunity to be here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Klein.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
My name's Jeff Klein. I've lived in Forest Lake for 12, 13 years or so. I appreciate Mayor members of the council for allowing everyone here to get up and speak tonight. I guess to answer the question, you know, I believe with the election just eight months away coming up, the city needs someone who can kind of step in and kind of hit the ground running, someone familiar with the issues, both the ones that garner all the media attention as well as some of the more mundane issues that are equally important but maybe don't get the headlines. And I would, you know, I'd venture to say that I probably know as much, you know, about current city issues as any candidates that's going to come up here. I mean, I certainly don't know as much what's going on currently as you four, but as far as the candidates go, I like to think I'm pretty well-versed, and for any of you that know me, I hope you would agree with that. And I'm confident in my knowledge of the issues to be able to make informed decisions at a, you know, pretty much right off the bat. And even though this is a placeholder appointment, you know, there's still many decisions to be made in the coming months. I know there's also a lot of talk of having a fresh face from the council or to be appointed to the council, but you know, I don't think my eight-month hitch five years ago necessarily brands me a has-been. I still think I'm fairly fresh, and I think that also makes it a unique position of having been elected to the city council by the citizens of Forest Lake. That could help. So you guys deadlock two to two after this whole process is over, and then ultimately, Mr. Mayor, you would have to appoint somebody, and I know that happened last time that this process went through, and every vote that came up after that, after that appointment was made, if it was a three-two vote, they used that as basically to say that third vote wasn't someone appointed, not elected, so granted, I wasn't elected yesterday perhaps, but maybe that could help offset some of that. And finally, on that question, you know, even though I was unable to finish my original term due to the requirements of my employment at the time, that is no longer the case, I have a different job than I did then, I no longer have to work nights, and in fact, I flew home early from San Antonio yesterday partly just to be here for this, so looking out the window, I'm not sure that was the right decision, but I believe it was because I, I didn't want to miss this, so that's probably my easiest answer to that question.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
Well, I think it's, to me, it's just the obvious one, we need to hire a city administrator. You know, the mayor and council can provide direction or vision for a city, but the day-to-day job of running the city, you know, ultimately rests with the city administrator. And councils come and councils go, as we've all witnessed, but with any luck, your administrator will stay through multiple incarnations of the council. And I know it's kind of especially important in Forest Lake because we tend to have these wild fluctuations and thoughts, whether within the council or certainly from election to election, and have the right person in that position with the stability to, you know, see the city through. When the winds may change, at least there's a voice in there that could help bring everybody together.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
I would say my vision is more like a methodical approach to government, not to be confused with slow, but I like to take a more methodical approach, and I guess it's more of a governing style than a vision, but what I mean is if you take, for instance, some of the more controversial issues recently, whether it's this building we're standing in, the YMCA, or certainly the police issue, I believe if there was a more methodical approach taken on any one of those issues, I think we probably would have still ended up as a city with the same result, very close regardless, but perhaps with a more methodical pace, we could have got there without the angst. I have an example, like last week, you know, the vote came up for the grant for like Lakeside Park, and some people were for applying for that matching grant for Lakeside Park, other people were opposed. Ed, I believe you suggested, you know, perhaps Fenway Park would be better use for that, and then, Mr. Mayor, you then thought maybe we could table it because that seemed to be a good discussion, but then you found out you had to do it by Friday, it had to be park-specific, so then the whole thing seemed rushed again, so the motion just died because there was no consensus on the park, there was no time to deliberate it, and I don't know whether this was rushed or not, it just appeared that some of the information coming forward was coming forward just at that meeting. So unfortunately, the whole thing had to die just because of the time constraint, so. And then I guess, there's even the case of like Mike's residency vote, Ed, sorry to point you out again, but I believe you complimented me and said I summed it up best that night when the vote was taken. If you recall, I basically stood at this very podium, as could suggest it in a nutshell, let's not rush to judgment, the truth is going to come out in the end, and let's let the chips fall where they may. And eventually, we would just get to a point of a vacated seat in due time, and that really wasn't that long ago, and here we are in due time. So I think you get, usually you get to the point anyway, and sometimes, you know, everyone thinks government moves at a snail's pace, and for a lot of things it does, whenever you're trying to, you know, accomplish something, but sometimes you just, you know, slow and steady will still get it done, so. I guess just to sum up, you know, I'm not here, I think you guys know me well enough, I'm not here to further any aspiring political career, I'm just, I'm basically here because I truly think I can help the four of you bridge this gap for the next eight months until we get to the next election. Not here to get my name out there or any precursor to a run this fall. So I would just, you know, like, welcome a chance to finish out Mr. Freer's term, who, like me, was unable to finish his term due to family and employment obligations, so. Thank you very much for listening, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do you have any questions, the council?
Like regarding the process or just anything?
Just in general.
Anybody watching the game tonight? Does anyone out there plan to run for reelection in the fall, or is that not a question I can ask at this point?
You can ask, maybe we won't answer.
Well, that's fair, I was just curious. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And Don, Don Steeler, welcome.
Welcome, Mayor, city council.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Yes, my name's Don Steeler. I'm a professional engineer, I have degrees in economics and engineering, including a master's degree in civil engineering. I own a small business, small structural engineering firm. The reason I applied for the position is the council needs someone that can debate and discuss the issues in front of it and planning for growth going forward, and I felt with my background, as well as not only my business background, educational background, but I'm a father of three, three kids, and the combination of all that makes me a good candidate to be able to discuss those issues.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
Well, as was mentioned before, the city manager position being filled is, is critical. I know, Dan, you've got a lot on your plate right now, and for one person to handle, it's a lot of work, that's one thing that's got to be done. Otherwise, overall, just general growth and planning in the city, being able to look at the issues brought before you and, and understand that the precedents that have been set before with the decisions and the discussions that have gone on prior, and looking at those decisions in front of you now that you have to make and how those decisions are going to set precedence going forward. As, as the city grows, you know, we are, as growth moves from the Twin Cities up the corridor here, Forest Lake is going to see a great deal of growth over the next few years. So it's a lot of considerations to be had.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned in my, in the application, the, the Forest Lake, as good as it sounds, I love the slogan, it, it really says it all with the, I'm a very outdoors person, very active person, grew up in, in New York, spent six years in Boulder, Colorado, lived in Honolulu for four years, moved permanently here to Minnesota in 1996, have lived in White Bear Lake, Shoreview, North Oaks, and now up here in Forest Lake, and, and the natural resources you have up here are fantastic, and with the lakes and the trails and the parks. And as you grow and as developments, you know, build in, it's really critical to keep those interlinked with the bike trails and the paths and, and to, to keep all those together. I know in the town I grew up in in Western New York, they, the city grew a lot and they thought of it too late, and they ended up having to spend a lot of money buying up the last of the farmland to create a greenway, a greenbelt to, to connect all the parks together, and this is the stage, you know, to be thinking of that all the time, and in every development and every, every new development, thinking of how to create those, keep that parks and trails linked and grow the community, and so that's a big, big important thing for me, is all the recreational aspects of Forest Lake, but I do understand the schools and the airport and the other aspects as well.
And finally, do you have any questions for the council?
No, no questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Kelly Munson. Welcome, Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Sure, my name is Kelly Munson, and my family and I live over on North Shore Trail. And my primary reason, I thought long and hard about my response to this question. For two years, our daughter attended school in Forest Lake while we lived in Hugo, and for two years, we drove her north to Forest Lake, well then I had to turn around and drive south to St. Paul, and we chose to do that because we loved the school. We soon realized that we loved the community as well. We then made the choice to leave the neighborhood our children grew up in, the place we built our house from the ground up, and move our family to Forest Lake. We've now been here for about three and a half years. We began attending Hosanna Lutheran Church and began to invest a little bit more of ourselves into the community as well. Having worked in the public sector for over 20 years, I paid, I paid attention and followed local politics, and I soon realized that all the potential that we saw in the city, progress was getting stuck. People weren't feeling heard, and a divide was growing. I was raised with a work ethic that you don't just complain about all the problems that are wrong, but you roll up your sleeves and you become a part of the solution and turn those challenges into opportunities. So I see my primary reason is because it is my duty as a citizen to be involved in the process. I feel I bring a fresh perspective to the issues at hand, as well as over 20 years of a professional career in public service. It is time for me to share this with my community and do what I can to move this community forward. My current professional role is to direct seven state commissioners to align their, their goals and policies while also building bipartisan support at the legislature to move the state forward, and it is my time again to share my knowledge and experiences with my community and work to move this community forward.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
You know, I could easily answer this question with responses such as better support for our schools, investments in economic development, attracting new business, et cetera, et cetera, and all of those would be vital issues to our community. However, I believe the top issue for our city is to change the narrative that surrounds it. We begin this by bridging the divide. We will not be able to, we will not be able to accomplish any of the aforementioned issues if we do not work to build trust with our residents and with each other. Time and energy needs to be put forth to mend broken relationships and build new ones. While efficient and effective government is vital, transparency must be at the forefront. We must assure that we are providing space for authentic community engagement. We need to assure we are making decisions and developing strategies that support the common good and not just a select few.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Sure. My vision for Forest Lake is to be an innovative community that is welcoming to all and encourages residents to become involved in their community. A community that invests in its future by supporting our local schools, our local businesses, and always looking at ways to support economic development issues, opportunities. A city that recognizes the need for parks and trails and protecting one of our greatest assets, our local lakes. A city that does not get stuck in status quo but has embedded processes and policies that allow for continuous quality improvement, meaning building, building off of our successes and not being afraid to make changes when we are not seeing the success we achieve. And I understand why this question is asked, and I want to highlight something significant around this question. This is my vision and my vision only, and as a council member, I believe it's our duty to assure that community sees their voice in the vision, and it is council member's duties to align all the visions, all the visions so that it is moving our community and forward. This involves compromise, negotiation, and much-needed transparency. So no matter my vision, it is also my duty to seek as much input from community when you are serving as a council member.
And finally, do you have any questions for the council?
I do actually have some questions, and they're for council members if they choose to answer them, but I'm curious, if there's one thing that you could tell the next council member that they should know in order to be effective, what would that be?
If you don't mind, the one question I'd want every council advocate to think about is a time commitment. It's, you really have to be dedicated to the job, and so that was my only comment about that, just the time commitment.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in?
I'll weigh in. The public that comes to the meetings, the public that I meet privately or out and about, be it Walmart or any of the facilities around town, aren't always the same.
Absolutely.
I would say probably, you know, the grand visions, you know, we all want, I think, the same thing for our community, to better it, to, you know, to grow, to make a thriving community, but really being able to drill down and know what we can change, what we can't, because there are so many different layers of government, layers of bureaucracy, so many regulations that we're bound to follow, that, you know, it's, it's, it's a much more difficult accomplishment than I ever realized before I got on the council anyways. You know, how can we change something? Well, you know, you got to keep hammering at it, and maybe years later, something happens, but it's just, it seems like, you know, even if our entire community wants something changed, a lot of times, you run into a regulation with the state or the county, or something doesn't match up, so.
Those darn state workers.
I would add, your role on council of, and what it takes to have a vision and to see kind of what you want to have in the future, but then also what that takes from coordination with staff who actually does the work, and to kind of keep, remember that that's a balance, and as the mayor... And as the mayor indicated, there's, you know, it's a multi-layered approach. I always like to say that, um, government either works really fast or really slow and rarely in between. Parks example, you know, be a grant opportunity and it was gone. And then there's other things where we will work on something for ten years before that takes place, so.
Thank you. I do have more, but I wanna be respectful for the ti- to the time and the other candidates. So I will hold these questions, but thank you for answering the one that you did. Thank you.
And Joshua Archer. Welcome.
Hi, can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Joshua Archer and first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanna throw out there, my address is nine one four Eighteenth Avenue Southeast in Forest Lake, 'cause I know that has a concern to some of the people in the room and maybe listening today, so. I am currently married to my wife, Sarah, of eleven years. We have five children ranging from the ages of nine to twenty-one. Serving on city council has been a passion of mine since I was younger. Um, I've always been a servant and always wanna come from a, a position of contribution, so, um, having that in mind, my family and I sat down and we talked about it over these last couple of weeks and, you know, we're talking about time commitment and, and everything else. So I just wanna relate to you guys, I do have their full support moving forward. Uh, and I know that's a, it's a family decision to make sure we have that commitment to you and to the ci- and the residents of Forest Lake. Uh, I'm currently a mortgage planner with Leader One Financial. I'm in the current, I'm in the process of moving my business up here as well, to Forest Lake. Um, my background is primarily in public service, over a decade in law enforcement, specifically, uh, along with finance, business development, and real estate. Most recently, I'm a Forest Lake Rotarian and appointed recently to the Forest Lake EDA. I have an extensive, I have extensive experience in education and conflict resolution and was an integrated conflict resolution management member with the Minnesota Department of Corrections. My primary reason and interest in running for city council was clearly defined in my candidate statement, but I'd just like to reiterate a little bit. Uh, we have a lot, we do have a bit of tarnished reputation here in Forest Lake. It's more like a us versus them mentality, um, and a continual theme here in Forest Lake. So I'd like to help mend and start rebuilding our reputation and relationships, bridge the gap of communication between our community and our leadership. I have been honing this skill for many years and feel that my personal, professional, and moral background positions me to serve with purpose, intent, and obtaining those results. Our community has been reaching out to have a voice and we need to hear them, communicate with them, and frankly, be transparent with them. We have tough decisions to make, yet it is our obligation to those we represent to discover shared objectives and work together towards finding innovative yet attainable solutions. Lastly, we have a lot of reasons and excuses why we do things, why we pass on opportunities. I want to have results and not reasons. Uh, we can agree to disagree, but don't forget those who have a concern or a voice moving forward. Everyone matters and everyone has the right to an explanation or a follow-up. I feel as if the follow-up is lacking and frankly, the educational piece to why these decisions or decision was made is crucial. This component will be crucial, again, in the long-term relationships and transparency moving forward.
Uh, what is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
Uh, the top issue, I believe, is a little, it's twofold. Um, we must move forward with a purposeful recruitment and onboarding of our next city administrator, period. Uh, this will spearhead a high level of accountability, focus, and forward-thinking execution administratively. And we owe this to our community. Uh, secondly is our budget planning. We need to make sound and smart investments with a high level of accountability, again, responsibility in our spending practices, future pacing Forest Lake to position ourselves correctly in a long-term vision of growth and partnerships.
Uh, describe your vision for Forest Lake.
My vision, again, I'm just gonna reiterate, we need to rebuild our partnerships and our relationships, primarily with our residents and our community groups with, from within. I believe we are currently coming from a position of scarcity and need to move forward with a position of abundance. Forest Lake has a lot to offer. We need to focus on internal customer service with each other so that positivity can, positivity can focus, so we can focus on positivity and push outward to our school districts, Washington County, Mendot, FLA, current and future partners. Forest Lake is seen as a stepping stone for advancement in our city employment positions and within our school districts. Subsequently, we are feeling pain with our staffing levels and retention respectively. We need to retain the great people we have now and become an employer of choice, a school district of choice, and a community of choice. We need to create and advance our relationships so we are a, we are premier community, a destination community of all ages and all families. We need to be business-friendly and supportive of our growth initiative and planning.
And do you have any questions of the council?
I do. I have one quick question. Um, if you could sum up in one attribute that you would need on city council today, what would that be?
I'd, I'd say communication. Anybody else got any?
Trust.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim Smith.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Sure. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the Forest Lake. Uh, my name is Jim Smith and my wife and I have lived in Forest Lake for about twenty-nine years now. We've raised our family here. My professional background consists of a variety of experiences. First as an electrician, then twenty-five years in Centennial Public Schools as a social studies teacher and administrator. And now I have a small business. I work as a national educational consultant and trainer. Uh, and I'm also the treasurer of a founding school board for charter school in the Twin Cities area. Uh, why am I interested in this position? There's a variety of reasons. A part of the reason and a big part of the reason is the perception of politics today. Currently, when I enter into a conversation about politics and government, it is clear we are living in troubled times, divisive times, in the nation, our states, and even our community. The work I have done in education is also highly politically charged. Often in my work, I'm hired by the superintendent to work with the classroom teachers. And there's often some sort of political agenda to this, which really, it may not align with the teach, uh, thinking of the teachers. My job is to walk into these two interests and help both move forward without losing sight of the best educational practices. This is the political acumen I bring to the position. I wish to bring this skill to the local process in a spirit of collaboration and listening, which is generally lacking in our political and civil discourse at the present time. It is only through a more civil approach that we can find the solutions to the problems facing our community. It is in this capacity as a problem solver and a relationship builder that I hope to serve.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
I do not believe that it's possible to identify the top issue in Forest Lake without looking at the vision of the person making that identification. So I will answer this question and the next concerning vision simultaneously. That's okay. Forest Lake must continue to be a forward-looking community, and the duty of the city leadership is to lead that vision. Our community leadership must responsibly understand the past to identify those pieces that work. Our leaders must look toward the future and anticipate the changes and challenges facing us in a world of growing complexity and rapid change. There are many issues confronting leadership every year. However, it is the overall vision that is critically important. For me, the number one issue or question we face is one of balance. How do we, as a community, go about finding the right balance between the needs of existing businesses and new business opportunities with the needs of current and future residents? How do we make Forest Lake a welcoming community for new businesses and residents while at the same time preserving what is best from the past? It is, it is finding this balance that is necessary when solving the daily problems and issues benefiting all members of our community. This is the most pressing need of all.
And did you wanna add anything on the vision or did you wanna?
Well, I kind of put them together in there, yeah. I, I'm good with that, still.
Uh, and do you have any questions for the council?
Well, I hate to say it, but I was gonna ask you what the most important attribute is of a city council member, but that just got covered, so we'll, we'll leave it with that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And Blaine Bacchus. Welcome, Blaine.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Uh, can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Yes, my name is Blaine Bacchus. Um, I'm interested in serving the city council because I have a desire to serve my community. I have, excuse me, I have a set of skills that I've acquired through public service, whether it be the fire department or serving a small community as a assistant public work superintendent. I believe that that experience has given me a perspective that is well-rounded and in-depth.
Uh, what is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
I think the top issue at hand would definitely be hiring a permanent administrator. And then the comprehensive plan is up for review and I think establishing a very inclusive plan, um, as right now Forest Lake is looking at imminent growth.
Uh, can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
The term vision would sometimes imply an agenda. I don't necessarily have an agenda. I think that the staff and the community have some of the best ideas. I believe the role of the council is to guide and, uh, help those ideas to succeed. So as far as that goes, um, I would like to find a comprehensive plan that includes the rural development. There's a lot of infrastructure need that need to be met, that need to be well thought out. And then with that, making sure that all the good ideas that are brought to the council succeed.
And do you have any questions for the council?
I do not. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Eric, Eric Lingis, welcome.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me tonight, listening.
Uh, can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Certainly. Um, approximately twenty years ago, I moved to Forest Lake from the inner city of St. Paul, and I think it was the best decision I ever made. Um, I'd made this my home and planned to stay here and retire. Shortly after I moved up here, where I lived in the township, we became one city. And that's when I started becoming active at our city council meetings, showing up, listening, and interacting and giving feedback to council members and the mayor at that time. A couple of years into that activism, I ran for school board on the Forest Lake School Board. I served in that capacity for one term and also served on the Metro ECSU and the executive, um, as an executive board member and the treasurer of that for three years. Additionally, that board selected me to represent them at the Minnesota Service Cooperatives Executive Board overseeing education for, at the state level on the EXU. After those four years, I served in a number of other roles. I listed them on the application and there's certainly others that I missed on there. But most recently, on the city, I have participated on our planning commission. I'm in my second term there and for the last roughly a year, I've been a member of the Complan Task Force. Our city is facing three huge things between now and the end of the year. Hiring a city administrator, the comp plan for the next ten years, and the twenty nineteen city budget. And each of these is a part that I think is incredibly important. The city administrator, I think, is the most important because hopefully it outlasts the nineteen budget. Hopefully it outlasts the comp plan ten-year. A ten-year comp plan, I think, is more important than the budget, um, because of the timeline. Each of these pieces are things that I bring experience in. From hiring an administrator, Linda Madsen, the superintendent of Forest Lake Area Schools before our current superintendent, was somebody that I was on the board when we hired her. I went through that process. The last two city administrators for the city of Forest Lake, I was in the citizen groups that interviewed those administrators. For approximately the last fifteen years, most of my employment history in the private sector and higher education has also been in, in, or in some way related to HR and hiring. I currently hire between three hundred to three hundred and fifty people a year. I'm well-versed on the process and how to do that and find that that would bring a great attribute to this council.
Uh, what is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
So I did name out the top three things that we're gonna see between now and the end of the year. Hopefully no surprises come up. But I think the top issue is actually selecting a candidate tonight. It is a person that you need to bring on board to join the four of you that will most likely be a deciding vote on many issues. And in the last two terms, or in the last term and part term on the planning commission, one of the things I'm most proud about is that I spend the vast majority of my time listening. I, I believe I'm a very good listener. I spend enormous amounts of time researching and then asking a lot of questions. And I think it's one of the reasons why our planning commission works so well. It's oftentimes complemented as functioning or a high-functioning board. And there certainly is not a cohesive political ideology on our planning commission. I think there's members of all different pieces of the spectrum. But having that leadership in that direction is something important. And I think having that on this council is your fifth vote. Somebody that's going to listen to the community and spend more time doing that is incredibly important moving forward.
Uh, describe your vision for Forest Lake.
One of the first pieces we had on the comprehensive task force about a year ago was setting a vision. And I won't read the vision, but it is, it talks about us being a regional hub. It talks about our transportation pieces. It talks about our housing growth, our small and large business growth. And I was part of writing that vision and I'm happy to support that. I think it's incredibly important that we maintain a regional hub status. And I think moving forward as neighboring communities to the south on both freeways and even north of us and west of us, um, they have great opportunity to poise business to come to them versus us. And I think that that is a challenge that we have. Um, and I think it's great that that is the very first thing in our vision, is that we wanna maintain the interregional hub.
And do you have any questions for the council?
I heard there was bonus points if we were short, so I won't ask questions. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Lingis, if I may.
Certainly.
Um, so I was interested in your application that you listed three, um, um, kind of beliefs you had around qualified candidates. And one was, um, you'd be qualified, you'd be capable, and you'd have general alignment. And in this case, you mentioned council member Freer. Can you give me, and I have had many conversations with council member Freer, um, can you give me an example of where you were different than council member Freer, however?
Certainly. Um, there was actually several areas where Mr. Freer and I did not agree. One was, uh, a planning commission item that came forward when St. Peter's Church expanded. And I fully supported the expansion of that. And at the planning commission level, we had conversations. And one of the pieces that I thought was important in that was that there was less accesses. The parking lot basically does its loop on the streets. And so I convinced our planning commission and, and moved that we modify that to increase public safety in that area. Council member Freer disagreed with me when it came to the city council and, and moved to, to strike that condition when, when that was passed. So that was a small one. Um, on a, on a much larger scale, um, you know, I think that there isn't huge things that he and I disagreed with philosophically. He tended to be one that would listen and... He tended to be one that would listen and wait until the last minute to make decisions. He was one that, you know, I think, I kind of modeled myself after when I became a member of our planning commission, because it wasn't always that I listened. I was quite an advocate when I was on the school board in our community, and spent much more time probably aggravating other board members than I did listening and collaborating and doing that. And that's something I learned over time.
Thank you.
Were there other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Melanie Castellano Swanson, welcome, Melanie.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Yeah, I have the world's longest name, so I apologize for that. Can't make it any shorter, I guess. But my name is Melanie Castellano Swanson, and I live in Forest Lake here. I've been here for about 12 years. We had a short stint in Ramsey for a very short time. I did not like it over there, and we came right back to Forest Lake. So we bought a house here, and brought our granddaughter with us, who we took care of and had an apartment here, and she goes to school here. I'm nervous now. But anyways, Eric stole my joke, because I heard at the last council meeting that if I could answer in short questions, that that would be good. So if I could answer yes or no, that'd be awesome, but I can't. So my primary reason for running for Forest Lake City Council is I believe that I have a voice, and I can speak for our citizens here, and I've listened to our citizens. I did campaign last time. I didn't have any signs, I didn't go out and, what do I want to say, campaign door-to-door, but I did get quite a few votes. I was pretty shocked, I never expected that. But I think those votes were earned by just listening to our citizens and what they would like for the city. I'm unbiased, I don't have any hidden agenda in my head. I just want to do what's best for the city, and I believe that that's what counts for most of this. I'm not sure of all the issues that are going on, but I believe having that kind of attitude helps to give me an open mind. So I can be unbiased, and listen to what's going, and listen to both sides of the story. And I'm a good debater, I'm a good talker, and I believe that just listening to what my fellow citizens have to say would help this council, and I would like to be a part of that. I've always, since I was a little girl, liked to be involved in things like this, so.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
Well, I believe maintaining our city to as close as it is right now is one of the big issues. Everybody wants to grow, and of course, I know that's important. I currently work in Forest Lake. I travel to HCMC every single day for the last seven years, and I'm so thankful to be working in this town. The town I live in, the town I, my children go, my grandchildren go to school at, I just am so thankful for that. And I believe that having more jobs here would help other citizens to remain in this city. I know that the treatment facility is a big thing on your agenda. I'd like to listen to both sides of that story, both sides of that issue. I think that's a big issue, but I also believe that it would bring more jobs into this community, and for the people that live here. It is so wonderful to just be able to do that. I'm three minutes from home, so I can just speak for that 100%. We all live here, we shop here, we do everything in this community, and I believe we need to listen to our business owners who have had their businesses here for a long time. So I'm not sure if those are really issues, but I believe that those are things that we need to listen to.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Well, my vision is to keep the community as it is, as close as it can, and I've already kind of said that. But my vision is, I'm a watershed steward here, too. I'm on the Comfort Lake Watershed and Forest Lake Watershed, I'm on the Citizens Action Committee, and people come here because of our lakes, because of our resources. And I believe that that's some of the things that we need to keep in this community, and keep our lakes as clean as we can. We've got a lot of invasive species coming in, but people, look at all the traffic that comes in here, Fourth of July, so on and so forth, and people love this place. So I believe that if we keep our community as close as it is right now, I think that's one of the most important things.
And do you have any questions for the council?
I do not, because I'll keep it short and sweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your listening.
Paulette Ralston. Welcome, Paulette.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Yes. My name is Paulette Denise Ralston, and I am a resident of Forest Lake. I've lived in Forest Lake for 17 years. I am a retired state employee for the state of Minnesota. I work for the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. I am speaking on my behalf, and not for an organization, but just for me personally. I have no hidden agenda, I have nothing behind me, it's just me. The primary reason I'm interested in this position, because a Forest Lake practitioner suggested that I apply. One of the practitioners that has an office here in Forest Lake. I applied because he thought that I would make a good addition to the city council. I highly respected this person, and was honored that he thought enough of me that I would, he thought that I would fit in and be able to do the job of the council member. As a result, I applied for it. The reason I, the reason I respect him so much is approximately eight years ago, he literally saved my life. So as a result, I had, unbeknownst to me, I had a stroke, and I didn't know it. So I went to him for help, thinking that I just slept on my arm wrong or something, because my right arm wasn't working, I had right-on weakness. So he looked concerned, and he said, you know, I want you to go to the emergency department right now, just leave and go. And so I did, and I went. And as a result, they determined that I had a stroke, and immediately took me down to Fairview and Minneapolis. So based on that, you know, I've known this practitioner for quite some time, and I highly respect him. And so since I felt that he kind of urged me to apply, that I thought that I'd do that. Because I just feel that I have fought my way back to good health, I've changed my lifestyle, I'm healthy now. And as a result, making the lifestyle changes, I know that the recovery was hard, and then I'll bring that same determination that I used to recover from my stroke, to help the city council reach its goals.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
I think the top issue depends on the person presenting it, because to everyone, their issue is, should be, top issue. So therefore, if I had to pick just one, I would say all issues are top issues. Organizational, whether it's organizational, city, citizens, citizen issue, law enforcement issue. However, if I had to choose just one, I'd say public safety, community safety, and that might be because I worked with the Department of Public Safety. Whether it's food safety, water safety, severe warning, weather, severe weather warning, workplace safety, school safety, electrical grid safety, guarding the community safely, protecting business and all safety, including environmental safety, as well as roads, routes and construction. So I guess that all of those things are top priorities, should be for the city. It's a tough thing, it's a tough thing to manage, however, it's something that should be done.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Oh, my, my vision for Forest Lake, an indoor mall. I miss Northland Mall, I'm sorry, I do. So when they tore down the mall, I just was crushed. Organizational issues, citizens, law enforcement, city, additional activities for residents, especially teenagers. Building and providing reliable, safe housing, safe roads, attracting and retaining competent and competitive school educators, safe places to live and work, as well as a safe place to raise a family. A place where our residents can be proud to say that they live here. A place that is good also for business, is my vision for Forest Lake.
And do you have any questions for the council?
Yes. Is there anything that would prevent or preclude me from obtaining this position? Is there any questions that you guys might have for me? I'd like to know, so I can give you the opportunity to answer them now.
Only thing I can think of is we don't have a mall.
You don't have a mall? I know. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim DeForre.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Sure can. Jim DeForre, living on Ninth Avenue Southeast. Moved up here in '88, fell in love with the place, more or less threw my anchor out and decided I wanted to stay here for a long time. I was on the city council from 2008 to 2012, I believe. Sorry about your mall, but we had to turn it down to build this building. The mall was blighted at that time, it was just vacant, there was really nothing going on. The time I spent on the city council, I believe we tried to move the city forward. There was a lot of disagreements with this building in particular, amongst a lot of other things, the turnback of County Road 34, North Shore Trail. We really didn't have a choice on that matter. We need to, as a city, help improve that. Those are very unsafe roads right now. Like I said, we didn't have a choice but take it back from the county, and we're stuck with it, let's fix it, amongst other things in this city.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
There is really no one top issue that I can see. I mean, of course, hire an administrator. Dan, you're doing a good job filling the shoes that you've been dealt, but it is a heck of a job to do, with all the construction and everything else going on, plus keeping the old feel around here, which a lot of people want. A lot of people want the old-town feel, but we want to grow as well. We want to make Forest Lake as good as it sounds, like the moniker says.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Like I say, I want to keep the hometown feel, but I would like to improve the city as well, too. There are other areas in the city that are pretty well-blighted that need to be rebuilt or cleaned up, beautified, what do you want to call it? The idea of the treatment facility going in down the south end of town here, I think is an outstanding idea. It'd be good for the community, it'd be good for people outside the community, bring people to the community, which would spend money in the community, which helps us grow. That's basically all I got. I want to really keep the natural resources good, being a trapper all my life, do a lot of nuisance trapping, and when we do grow, not encroach on wildlife so much as to where I see areas where we have deer herd surrounded by houses, they have nowhere to go. That's not the way to do it. Got to leave escape routes for the animals, too.
And do you have any questions for the council?
Not that I could think of. I do know that, like I say, with my job constraint now, I am working in Becker most of the time, mostly 12-hour days, but I can make my job, try to make my job schedule accommodate for this, and I would really like to be involved in the city again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connie Grabolvi.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Hi, my name is Connie Grabolvi, and I am a resident of Forest Lake. I grew up in Forest Lake, I'm a product of our wonderful school system here in Forest Lake, and went on to become a registered nurse after doing several other things in my career. As a registered nurse, I love building relationships with the membership that I work with currently. I'm working for Medica and their government programs. As a nurse, I've served in government-related positions as a nurse, and appreciate the time and effort it takes to run a city, run a government program, things like that. I would love to use the skills that I have learned professionally to serve my community. I have a passion for service and for advocating for people, and I believe that this role would provide an opportunity for me to give back to my community.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
I think the top issue in Forest Lake is to continue to establish trust with our community, and to bridge some relationships that have been, I would say, stretched and damaged over the last year with some of the issues that we have had come up in our city. And I really think that acknowledging the differences we all have when we think about what we want for our city is critical. Being willing to come to the table and have difficult conversations honestly and openly, with a deep commitment to solving problems, and having those conversations with the goal of moving our community forward.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Well, as a lifelong resident of Forest Lake, I would love to see our community stay a unique community, with a revitalized downtown area. I currently live in West Bay Condos, so we are living in our downtown area. There's a lot of fun things that happen in various times of the year downtown, but I see so much potential down there, and would love to see that area really develop and have some opportunities for people that not only live on the lake, but for all members of our community to be able to access the lake and enjoy the lake and our downtown area. So I'm really excited about what the future holds for Forest Lake. I also, as a professional, would love to have other professional opportunities in the city of Forest Lake for everyone, not only for kids in high school needing a job, entry-level positions, but also people that choose to obtain education, either a technical trade or through a four-year degree program, be able to stay in the city and provide their talents and skills to forward our community, instead of always leaving and going to either the cities or some other community to work.
And do you have any questions for the council?
I do not, and I thank you for the opportunity to be part of this process this evening.
All right. Thank you. And Bob Mason.
Good evening, Mayor Winnick and councilmembers.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us the primary reason you are interested in serving on the Forest Lake City Council?
Yeah. My name is Bob Mason. I've been a citizen of Forest Lake for over 12 years. Over the past 10-plus years, I've worked my way up to the kitchen and catering manager at the Famous Dates here in town. I work in the community in a volunteer capacities, as the president of the Forest Lake Rotary Club, the past chair of the Forest Lake Area Chamber of Commerce. In addition, I'm on the fundraising committee for the Lake Center for Youth and Family, Assistant Rams Fundraising for the Fourth of July, and most recently, I've been added to the Lake Fest Committee, where we'll be having our first annual chili cook-off fundraiser. Still looking for some judges, by the way. I've always been interested in local government, and I can think of no better community to serve. I have a drive to serve, as can be seen by the aforementioned volunteer activities I'm involved in, and I'm looking to expand my ability to advocate for the taxpayers and be their voice.
What is the top issue in 2018 for the city of Forest Lake?
Well, I hesitate to know what the top issue is, as we're only a quarter of the way through the year. However, hiring a city administrator seems to me something that needs to be on the top of the to-do list, besides a new council member. However, after attending many meetings and watching the ones online that I could not be here for, I've noticed that at most meetings, either in the open forum portion and/or the agenda, that there's always something to do with the airport going on. And I do feel that at some point, and probably nearer than farther away, that it will become a bigger issue than it appears to be at the present.
Can you describe your vision for Forest Lake?
Yeah. My vision of Forest Lake is to have realistic financing and budgets. We need to strive to get taxes low enough that companies will want to and can afford to come to Forest to come to Forest Lake without taxpayers' subsidies and tax abatements. We need to only negotiate from the position that the taxpayers and the city come first, and that any increase in the levy must not only demonstrate a need, but be justifiable for the whole community and not just a select few in the short term, but be sustainable over the long haul. I will always insist that we look at options other than an increase in taxes first. I'm fiscally conservative with my own budget, and I will bring the same philosophy with taxpayer money. Needs come before wants. I don't easily find justifications for spending, to spend on things that are not needed. If appointed, I'd be a tireless advocate for the taxpayers and the city, and do everything in my ability to continue to have Forest Lake be the best place to live, work, and play.
And do you have any questions for the council?
Just one, and it'll be brief. Will the appointee be taking over former council member Freer's previous commission duties, or since it's just filling the end of a term, if we're not going that route?
So, my plan is to first get that person appointed to the council, and then be able to judge, you know, their talents and skills, and what committees they may want to serve on. And obviously, the senior council members will have options to pick first, but, you know, I think we wouldn't do the best job if we just put them in the same committees that they were right now. Great question, though, thank you.
And thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. And that fills out the list of candidates. So, at this time, we're going to take a little recess, five minutes, and we'll be back. Thank you. We'll call this meeting back to order. And so, we've heard from all the candidates, thank you very much. Just like to tell everybody, it's not a popularity contest, I appreciate everybody coming out here. We have to choose one person tonight, but you've all done a great job, and we do have some openings on commissions as well. So, you know, even though we have to pick one person tonight, really appreciate all your efforts, and look forward to the continuation of that as we go into the future, not only in our commissions, but just great participation within our community. So, thank you all very much. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the council for any deliberation that we may want, any discussion, and/or look for nominations.
Well, the only comment I want to make is kind of reiterate what you're saying, Ben, is the fact that we have thirteen highly qualified candidates. We have to pick one, that's going to be a tough job. And so, I just want to tell everybody how much I appreciate the effort and the time you've taken to do that. So, don't come back with the pitchforks and torches.
And if they do, it's you.
Anyways, thanks a lot, folks, and we'll try to get this settled here, so.
I also would like to thank all the candidates that came forward. It's not easy, as you probably found out, standing up at the lectern and trying to express your reasons as to why you would like to be on this side, but let me assure you, it's not that easy on this side either. You're asking for a lot of responsibility, and I appreciate you being willing to step up to the task. Thank you.
I'll echo those same comments, and just appreciate the interest in office and the interest in, most importantly, to serve and to help be a part of making things better. And so, well done tonight.
I really am surprised at, you know, we had thirteen candidates show up and apply.
And thirteen showed up tonight, and they knew there were thirteen, which is good.
Yeah, exactly. Last time we did this was, or I was on the council at the time anyway, and I believe there was two or three applicants at that time. It was quite limited, anyway, and it's great to see, it's really refreshing to see whichever side, you know, pro, con, however you want to label it, yes, no, but it's great to see this level of interest in our community. Couple of things, I just, you know, the divisiveness, and, you know, that was mentioned quite a few times, and whenever there's a passion for something, I think you're going to see that come out on both sides. It's been my experience, as I talk to other mayors, other council members from different communities, I hate to say it, but we're not alone. There's a lot of communities out there where there's always something happening, there's something, you know, friction. In fact, there's quite a few communities around that are quite a bit more extreme than we are, as far as that goes, anyway. Whenever you're, you love your community, you fight for it, and that's, I think, what we see, so. It's not always the worst thing to have a little bit of friction, so. Anyhow, that's my view of that.
We don't suffer from lack of engagement, right?
Exactly, exactly. Getting back to what everybody showed up here for, we need to find somebody to fill this seat. And I will look for discussion on that, or nominations. Bridget, is there any particular, is there any particular, do we have a motion, do we have, I mean, what, how specific do we have to be on this issue?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. If you have any additional deliberation or discussion, you could certainly talk about any particular candidates before making a motion. Alternatively, someone could make a motion to appoint, insert name here, to the vacant seat. That would need a second, then there would be an opportunity for discussion, just like any other motion. If it passes, then I guess the first person appointed is appointed to the seat. If it fails, then there'd be an opportunity for another motion to be brought forward, candidate B, if you would. So, it's really up to the council's pleasuring honor as far as if you want to have a more engaged discussion process before a motion is made, or if someone wants to make a motion, and then there can be additional discussion after that motion is made.
All right, thank you.
Well, just so you know, I kind of boiled it down to three or four, really, but the one, which is, like I said before, it's one seat, so. My motion, I'd make a motion that we, or I'd like to nominate Connie Grabovi.
All right, we have a nomination for Connie, then Bridget, we need a second for that before there's a vote, or not?
So, Your Honor, members of the council, hearing what council member Husnick just stated, there are a couple of options. You indicated you had a few people, I mean, certainly the council could kind of throw out, if you've got a pool, to see if there's any names in common, or alternatively, you could make a motion, it would need to be an actual motion to appoint Connie Grabovi to that seat. It would need a second, then there'd be discussion and a vote. So, it's up to the council as far as if you want to try and discuss if you have a list of, a shortlist, if you would, or if you want to just move into making a motion at this time.
I guess my personal preference, Sam, would be just, I don't want to knock or, you know, try to discuss one person's benefits over the other, I think, right at the time, but just have a motion and...
Then a second and vote, and we just open the list?
That's my personal preference, anyway.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought the process was going to be, so. My motion would stand for Connie Grabovi.
Okay.
I would second that motion for Connie Grabovi.
Any further discussion? Bailey, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Bain?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Agner?
No.
And Mayor Winnick?
Uh, no. So, open that up again for another nomination.
So, I'd like us to have a four-o vote for this next seat. And that might be a bit much to ask, but as I look for, who could, who could be a person that is, that would gather four votes? Don Steeler has done some amazing things in his short time at the Airport Commission. I think he has, I would make a mo, I'll save my discussion for later, but I would make a motion for Don Steeler.
All right.
You made that, is that a motion?
Yeah, motion.
I'll second it.
And?
Council? Discussion?
Sorry, Your Honor, is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I would like to comment on Don. I think he obviously is a very good candidate. My concern is that he's already serving on a commission, the Airport Commission, and he chairs that commission. We already have Mr. Husnick here, who's, was on the Airport Commission, and I have myself, which is on the Airport Commission, and I think it's weighting it a little bit too heavily towards the airport. That's my thought.
I considered that as well, and I would just add, highest and best use of skillset. He has navigated some very tough issues, and has done that very skillfully and independently.
You sure that navigated it, didn't you?
And navigated, right. And it's a good quality when you're talking about an airport, right? But I think that that's a skillset I would value in this position, and certainly it leaves a vacancy, but let's, highest and best use of that skillset, I'd like to see it here.
And I agree completely, I mean, it's not, I don't think he has any kind of, you know, bias toward or against the airport or anything else. I think he's a highly qualified individual that could make good decisions, and he's already proven that. And as far as a position on the Airport Commission, that's an appointed thing, that's not a big deal, in my opinion.
All right. Bailey?
Councilmember Bain?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Agner?
No.
Mayor Winnick?
All right, I'll look for any other nominations. Any other nominations?
So, I'll make a motion for Jeff Klein.
All right, we have a motion. Do you have a second? Hearing done. We'll pass on that. Do you have any other nominations? All right, hearing done, we're going to have to declare a deadlock, and...
It just seems like that the weight is in making the nomination, so it could be voted down, that's the worst part. I'd like to hear what you guys make of a motion.
I don't think we're done yet.
No, I think, I think I'd like to hear a motion from one of you.
I agree.
I'll make a motion, I would like to nominate Blaine Backus.
All right. We have a nomination, do we have a second? For discussion, I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, my thoughts were that he's from his app, he is currently, I believe, a member of Public Works, so he obviously would have an understanding of Public Works, which is huge to our city, as we, especially as we're trying to expand into the rural areas. I think he'd be a good fit with Dave, who is the head of Public Works, and advocating for some of the projects that Dave is pushing for, and he would have a good understanding. He also has, if I believe, and I read his app right, he's also has, he's a small business owner, so as such, he would be a strong advocate for people that are struggling to bring businesses to Forest Lake and understand some of the obstacles that they face. So, again, those are some of my reasons why. He's a new face to Forest Lake, so I think he comes unencumbered with some of the previous things, if you want to call it baggage. So, for those reasons, I think he's a, from what I read on his app, he's a young man with a young family and wants the best for Forest Lake.
All right, Ed. Any further discussion? Bailey, can you get a roll call?
Councilmember Bain?
No.
Councilmember Husnick?
No.
Councilmember Agner?
Aye.
And Mayor Winnick?
All right. Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Kelly Munson.
I'll second her.
Any discussion?
I, so, I nominate, I nominate Kelly because of her, she was dead-on in our, kind of, what are, what's next for Forest Lake, and what is important for twenty eighteen. While we, vision is important in the long term, and we need to keep that in mind for whoever we, we used, I almost ignored higher, whoever fills this seat. We have some very important decisions to make in twenty eighteen around hiring a city administrator. I think her experience in setting public policy will be very helpful in guiding that process, and I think she brings some terrific relationships. I would like to see her considered.
All right.
Councilmember Bain?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Agner?
No.
Mayor Winnick?
Going through the list, any other nominations?
I nominate Josh Archer.
Which one?
Josh Archer?
I'll second him.
Any discussion?
So, Josh is recently appointed to our EDA, has done some great work on our Rotary. I appreciate his collaborative approach and his vision for Forest Lake, I think he'd do a great job sitting next to us.
I think all these candidates would do a great job, so I... Any further discussion?
Councilmember Bain?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Agner?
No.
Mayor Winnick?
Any further nominations? All right. I guess hearing done, then I can declare a deadlock at this point, we're going to try, and I'm going to step back to Blaine. Young gentleman is going to bring a face, a fresh face, different view, hasn't been on one side or the other. So, Blaine Backus, I'm going to appoint you to city council. Welcome to the seat. I bet you're wondering, what did I just get myself into, huh? All right. Now, we had a discussion about off the office tonight, or at the next meeting, if you want a photo opportunity with your family?
I will let my family be present, so at the next meeting.
All right. So, we'll skip that on the agenda tonight, and bring us up to any other business for the council. Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.